First of all, I'd like to thank you guys for coming to tonight's candidate forum. The Brighton Youth Commission is so honored to have the opportunity to play a role in municipal government to this capacity. I'd like to thank the Greater Brighton Chamber of Commerce for co-hosting with us tonight, and I'd like to thank the Armored Performing Arts Center for allowing us to have our event here. To the candidates, I would like to tell you how admirable it is that you're willing to go above and beyond to serve your community. Before we begin, I'm just going to give you guys a little bit of information about tonight. In a moment, we're going to give each of the candidates two minutes to introduce themselves. Following that, they have each chosen two questions at random that they will have one minute to respond to. Everyone will answer their first question, and then we will start the second round. Then, we will have a third question that each candidate will ask. This is one question for all of them, once again, one minute. Following this, there will be a closing, once again, one minute. And then, following the closing, there will be time for questions from the audience. During the audience question portion, we ask audience members to keep their questions to under 30 seconds, and candidates will have one minute to answer this question. After the Q and A, there will be a brief networking period until 8:00 PM. And another note about audience, if you would prefer to write your question, we will come and collect it, and we will ask it for you. We have paper and pens for you. Is Tessa here? She's not. Anyway, if you see, there's Tessa. She'll have paper for you if you would rather write your question. All right, and then, there is also a time keeper, right there, Sydney. Time is always a tricky thing, but we will be strictly enforcing your time limit. The time keeper will put up a yellow paper when you have 10 seconds left, and then will hold up a red paper when you are out of time. After the red paper, we will verbally ask you to stop. We will also be recording this event for Channel 8, and it will be available to watch very soon. Finally, we ask that everyone is respectful of each other and all attendees. All right, let's go ahead and start with introductions, starting with Vadim Applebaum. We do have a mic, it's just going to kind of be passed along, we only have two up there, so just going to have to pass them along.
Thank you so much. My name is Vadim Applebaum, I'm a candidate for Ward 4. I've lived in Brighton for a couple of years, two and a half actually, now that I think about it. My biggest platform, I guess, out here is that I'm running on communication and accountability. I really want to get the citizens of Brighton more involved. I want to make sure that everybody understands the issues that the city council is going to vote on at any given point, and that the elected officials are held accountable for the votes that they cast and for the decisions that they make for this city. So if you have any questions, I'd love to meet with you guys afterwards. Again, Vadim Applebaum, candidate for Ward 4.
Hi, I'm Chris Giornelli, I'm Ward 3. And my family's been in Brighton for 75, 80 years, starting with my grandparents, they started the restaurant Giornelli's. My grandfather also had a trade, the painting business, and I've been in my house, I'm in the house that my family's been in for 65 years, I'm just a block from the city building. I'm interested in getting the city council to work together. You know, there's been a lot of division, and I know I've talked to former city council, and they talked about times when they really got things done, and they worked together, they talked, they communicated, it was transparent. And so, for whatever reason, people are drawing battle lines these days, but I think I'm going to be a force to start communicating, bringing people together, with the help of other council members. But I think somebody's got to take the lead, somebody's got to start doing it, talking to the staff people. There's a lot of people in the staff that have to be paid attention to, because they're running the show, and we're just there representing the people between them and the staff. So I want to hear from the people, obviously, and I want to hear from the staff. And I just want to try to open up communication lines between everybody, and be a reasonable voice. I mean, you know, why not? Spread some reason around. So I really appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I am Deborah Parmley, and I am running for Ward 3 council member. And I want to be another female voice on the council, and I am running a "me for you, you for me" type campaign. I have been hearing a concern from the residents in Ward 3, excuse me, the last 10 years, they feel has become progressively worse in their 30 to 50-year span as Brighton residents. The reasons vary, from incompetence, lack of stability, lack of communication, not listening to the constituents, and they are definitely ready for change. Transparency, accountability, and responsiveness is what I will address and make sure going forward. I do have an extensive background in all areas of accounting, from the basics, AR, AP, billing, tax filing, general ledger, capital assets, as well as finance and budgeting. I was also a district and regional administrator. And throughout the years, I have volunteered my services extensively in many different ways, from Marchadimes, SPCA, HOA treasurer in Hawaii, as well as Indigo Trails here, and job shadowing, some TROs, and Sea Life Park. I have the extensive skills and knowledge needed to be an effective council member. I'm now ready to serve Brighton.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming. My name is Mary Ellen Pollak. I'm in Ward 2, I'm in my fourth year, approaching a reelection. I have no opponent. I've been in Brighton for 37 years, I have my office here. I'm a bail bond agent, so I moved to Brighton because this is a county seat. So I did live in Thornton, but I was traveling so much to Brighton that I thought, well, I just better stay here, because there's just too much traveling. And we have a great city, yeah, we're not perfect, by no means, but we're working on I have five children, nine grandchildren, I think we're at 14 great-grandchildren. I'll know more around Christmas time, you know, they come really fast, so anyway, we'll see. I've enjoyed council, I ran for council to give back to the community that's been so good to me all these years, because they have been. And so I was talked into running. A couple of friends of mine came to me and said, "We think you need to run for city council." And I'm like, "Really?" "Yeah, it's time you give back to your community." And I said, "Well, what do I do?" And they said, "Just ask for what you want for your ward." Yeah, it's not that simple, but I'm trying. Thank you.
Good evening, thanks for being here. I'm Christopher Schinnig. I've been a resident of the city of Brighton for 38 years. I have a bachelor's degree in law enforcement and a master's degree in management. I retired from the Brighton Police Department one year ago with 40 years of service, all of those were in the city of Brighton. When I retired, I was a commander of the professional standards unit, in that capacity, I oversaw the training for the Brighton Police Department, as well as conducting internal investigations. During my career, I spent a lot of time involved in accounting, budgeting, overseeing grants and contracts, and making tough decisions under pressure. In my 40 years, I've attended over 100 city council meetings. I promise to regain your trust in local government. I will insist that the city be transparent with you. I was raised in a professional organization that demanded high ethics and excellent customer service. When I decided to run for the city council, my main goal was for us to unite and become the solid community that we used to be, and I know that we've stumbled a little bit, but we're still an excellent city, and I hope to bring us back to that high point that we are supposed to be at. Thank you.
Hello, everyone, thank you for hosting us tonight. My name is Tim Watts, I'm the candidate for Ward 1. I've been living in Brighton now for seven years, moved here from Fort Collins, prior to that, I was in Florida. So if you want to learn about group officing, let me know, I can show you how to do that. I got into running for city council last year, after going to meetings, I was seeing some things, I noticed that the seat was coming open in Ward 1. Last May, I decided to run to help, like everyone else, bring more transparency to our city council with the residents and our local government, as well as open lines of communication. When new buildings are coming up, I think you have to have more of an exposure with when the public hearings are, things of that nature, and just be more informed as a community. I want to help Brighton grow, I think we're doing great now, we're moving along, there's some issues that we have and some opportunities that we need to work on, but I just want to see Brighton grow, reasonable growth, just make it a better town for everybody. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Adam Cushing, candidate for Ward 4. I want to thank the Brighton Youth Commission and Chamber of Commerce for hosting us, and thank everybody for coming. I've been a Colorado resident for nearly 40 years, I've lived in Brighton for 13, been on our HOA Board of Directors for six years, and the president of the HOA for three. Have a wife, Shanna, we've been married for 23 years, and I have four kids. So I'm a senior-level IT consultant in my professional world. Basically, what I do is I work with businesses, their mid-level management, C-level executives, they kind of tell me what they think the problems are. Oftentimes, I go out in the field, I talk to the people who turn the wrenches and actually do the work, and I find out what the actual problem is, and then we come back and we end up having a pretty decent conversation about how to solve those problems. So I feel like that gives me a pretty unique skill set and perspective that can kind of help with city government. I think that kind of problem-solving mentality is something that we're kind of missing at this point, and going out and actually seeing, putting eyes on things, and finding out what's going wrong is a really critical part to figure out what to do to fix it. Prior to that experience, doing IT consulting, I actually did 911 call center installations, which was kind of another interesting perspective that I had, working with government agencies and trying to implement solutions to improve their public safety systems. You know, there's a lot of concerns right now in Brighton, water, public transportation growth. I think I'm prepared to jump in with two feet and find out what needs to be done to improve these things and get them done. The division is a big concern of mine, it's another reason why I ran for city council, and I think with better transparency and city council members working together, we can really get a lot done. Thank you.
My name is Archie Demarest. I've been a resident of Brighton for 12 years. My wife, Marty, and I are refugees from Boulder. I worked for the state of Colorado for 24 years as a computer programmer, and while at the University of Colorado in Boulder, I served on the Boulder Campus Planning Commission. Arriving in Brighton, I got myself appointed to the Brighton Planning Commission and served one year as its chairman. Now, the most important thing that the city council does is hire the city manager. As you know, the previous city manager in the city had a divorce, we got the house. But hiring the manager, because he runs the city day-to-day, that is critical to do. After that, the city manager then prepares the budget. The city council then looks over the budget, approves it, and then, during regular business, proposals are brought forward by the planning department, and the city council then manages in some way the actual budget that gets spent. So the critical thing is getting the city manager, keeping control of the budget, and keeping an eye on what other things go on in the city. These things are the most important. Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Danny Sandoval, and I am running for city council in Ward 4. There's a few of us up here, as you could see. I've been in Brighton for about 15 years, 14 years, 15 years, and I have spent 22 years in law enforcement, the last 11 years with the Brighton Police Department. I actually worked for Commander Schinnig at the time, he was both a sergeant and a commander. And I think what, one thing that I've learned in my time in law enforcement is that what we do is service, service to the community. We serve the citizens that we work for, and that was a big key component for me, working in law enforcement, working for several different agencies, and that was a lot of what I've learned to do. So now that I've left law enforcement and I'm looking to transition out and do other things, one of the things I wanted to do was continue to give back to the community, still provide that service that I so much enjoyed. Doing that service with integrity and honor is of utmost importance to me. Having the integrity to always do its right, to be honest and to be true, and having the honor to uphold, to bring good rapport, good reflection upon the organizations I am associated with, but more importantly, upon my family. I have a wife, and together we have eight children, from the ages of six to 19. Two of them are in college, and the rest are in high school, middle school, and elementary school, and it goes two by two by two by two. So we maintain a pretty busy household. In having a family that size, I've not only had to learn management outside in the workforce as a former supervisor, police officer, but also as a father. So those things are really important to me, to bring to the table, so think about voting for me if you live in Ward 4. Thank you.
All right, thanks, guys. Now we're going to go ahead and move into round one of the randomly chosen questions. Just to remind you, there are two mics up there, one of which is in there, so you don't have to pass down one down all the way next time. So we're going to go ahead and start with, once again, round one. Each candidate will answer one of the questions, then we'll come back for round two. We're going to go ahead and start out with Chris Giornelli. His question was, "What are you going to do to increase youth voice in the community?"
Testing. So we have the lodge tax for our youth, which I will support and also increase if at all possible within the budget, and we also have fundraisers that the youth do. So, you know, my support will be to help the youth help themselves, basically. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Then we have Deborah Parmley, and her question is, "How do you vote to better public transportation in Brighton?"
Wow. I don't really participate in RTD that much, but what I have seen, I have noticed that there is a park and ride, and it seems to be very successful. What I've also noticed is there's no buses on the weekend. I always thought that was peculiar, because everybody goes shopping on the weekend, and I'd have to do a little bit more digging and exactly to understand, maybe some better partnership with RTD. One thing I've also noticed is perhaps just the smaller buses, if we could just maybe get some smaller buses to do quick routes around here. And I have noticed that there's some, maybe some private transportation, but that can be expensive as well. So I just have to dig a little bit further to see what more we could do.
Thank you. All right, now we have Vadim Applebaum. "In addition to websites, how would you utilize social media websites to inform the city of Brighton better?"
I think this is kind of a fun question for me, I've been in business development for many years. So my focus would be probably to utilize something like a YouTube channel for the city, and expand our Facebook page, as well as maybe Twitter and Instagram accounts, with the idea that we will try to create a following that we can then use to notify residents and direct them to resources that will inform them about the issues that are facing the city, and tell them how they can take action. So the idea being that we want to focus on using all the available resources that really don't cost us much at all, if anything, and engage the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher Schinnig, "What are you going to do to increase youth voice in the community?"
Well, the youth of Brighton have always been a topic that's near and dear to me. I originally was on the committee when we formed the Boys and Girls Club, and started out as a dream of people like Councilman Dick Hodge and Commissioner Skip Fisher, and we made it a reality. And I'm very pleased with our youth commission and the work that they have done towards addressing teen suicide. And I would like to see more accountability in terms of finding out what these groups are doing with the city of, the city council, and how we can assist in some of those endeavors. I was the chairman of the Adams County Youth Diversion Program for many years when I was a police officer, and in that capacity, we oversaw a county-wide diversion program with youth who had been charged with drug and alcohol offenses, and we ended up with a 95 success rate percent on that, so.
It's time. We have new laws. All right, Adam Cushing. "In addition to the website, how would you utilize social media websites to better inform the city of Brighton?"
So going to city council meetings and even being on an HOA board, I've often noticed that a lot of people don't tend to participate in those resources until they're upset about something. And I think one thing that contributes to that is that we're not communicating with people in the ways they communicate, especially when we get into dealing with younger generations. Social media is a reality of how a lot of people communicate, and I think, you know, we've done a lot of neat things with newsletters and print media, but it's really critical that the message gets out to people on a regular basis, on the ways they actually communicate, so they don't find themselves getting frustrated that they don't understand what's going on in the city, you know, are things getting done, are projects being canceled, why are they being canceled? All of those things are really important for people to know, and we just need to do a better job getting that out there, Facebook, Instagram, all those mediums that people use. Thank you.
Dave Sandoval, "What is your opinion on lowering the voting age to 16 on certain issues?"
Okay, youth issues are very important to me, having many youth in my household, and having been involved in this community for the years I have, having been involved with the Brighton Youth Commission through my own children and the Brighton Police Explorer Program, I believe that a youth voice is very important, and I love the fact that in Brighton currently we have youth commission members that sit on some of our other commissions and boards with a voice to be able to present that information. So I believe locally, lowering the voting age to 16 for some local issues would be something I'd be open to studying and being okay with, and I think that's where the biggest impact would be, give those youth that opportunity for the last few years of their teenagehood to really get involved and really try to understand issues and help them grow into becoming responsible voters.
Tim Watts, "How do you vote to better public transportation in Brighton?"
You know, right now, looking at a few of the areas that we have with the public transportation, I see a lot of unsafe spots, and it's something I'd like to work with other members of the council, along with the city manager and the mayor, to find resolutions to some of these problems with help from RTDs such as bus stops that have maybe seating and lighting available for the nighttime riders, snow weather for covers for the snowy part of the days or the rainy part of the days. Just over on 142nd and Long Speake, I notice a lot, there's just a corner there, and nobody really has an opportunity to sit or wait, and I notice four or five people every morning getting on that bus, so I just think offering more amenities to those people would help with the public transportation. And along with Deborah, you know, digging into it more as time goes on and finding other resolutions, but definitely working together with other members of council and planning and our city manager.
Mary Ellen Pollak, "What is your opinion on lowering the voting age to 16 on certain issues?" Negative. So they're still very young, they're not even out of high school at 16. I don't want to depend on people, young people that aren't aware of how we function in this country, not just listening to social media or Snapchat or whatever it is they do. We have, of course, a lot of young, intelligent children, but I think 16 is absolutely too young for them to vote. Just my opinion, and I'll vote no. Thank you.
Archie Demarest, "How do you vote to better public transportation in Brighton?"
All righty then, the choices are, will it be RTD, commercial, or the city of Brighton to support public transportation? Commercial operations are not going to do it, because there's no money in it. RTD is already doing what they think is right, they have extensive analysis departments to decide where ridership is and what kind of buses to run, and that's what they're doing right now. And they're not inclined to do much more, because as I was at a city council meeting, and a representative of RTD admitted that the ridership from Brighton to Denver was 75 a day, that just doesn't get it. So then we have the choice of Brighton building some sort of system or running a bus circulator. All right, that will work, but it's going to cost, and so much of Brighton is spread out that it's quite impractical to run an even close to decently efficient system. So the general answer is no.
All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to round two. This is the second random question that everyone drew, this time you're going to start with Archie Demarest. "What's more important for our city right now, building new homes and commercial spaces or rehabbing, expanding, or better using, utilizing our existing home and store fronts?"
Building new homes is not a problem, we can't stop it. The commercial space, we have too much already that is underutilized, there's lots of empty stuff at Prairie Center, and of course, we all understand what's going on in downtown. The answer is to encourage BURA to work harder, give them more money, give them more encouragement to attract businesses to come and fill the commercial spaces. This can be done, it just needs more work. As you may have noticed, the three dead businesses on North Main have suddenly been filled, so things are happening, we just have to keep at it, but it will eventually get done. Forget about the new homes. So, thank you.
Mrs. Pollak, "Some people in our community think that we are tracking a traffic problem. What do you think? How would you mitigate those concerns or change the situation?"
Well, excuse me, I don't see a traffic problem, I think we operate pretty smooth. As for parking, that's another story. I'm, North Main is part of my ward, and there's a lot of business there, and it concerns me that there's not enough parking. Yeah, we have some throughout, but a lot of people don't want to walk for two or three blocks to go to one of our stores, so I would like to see us figure something out so that we can make parking easier. But as for the traffic, I think, I think we're doing a pretty good job. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Watts, "Do you think our main street and downtown are sufficiently accessible? If not, what would you do?" If not, what would you do to change that?
I think we're moving in the right direction right now with Main Street and downtown there with being successful and healthy, but obviously a lot of work to do, we just need to dress up the area. I think the park going in will help with the brightness as long as it's maintained and really just kept up. It's a little apprehension at the park at first, but I think with adding that lighting there and adding more destination points to that area will help with the Main Street success. There's some great restaurants down there, there's some great breweries, there's nice bars. I think it's moving in the right direction, I just think we need to add more, like Mary Ellen said, some parking is definitely a needed item downtown. And just bring some brightness and some upkeep to it, that'd be great.
Mr. Sanderball, a future rural and growing and farming heritage small town feel emerged as one of four themes in the city's D.B. Brighton Compliments and Plan update. The efforts, funding, and evaluating in the district plan are helping to realize this vision with goals to preserve farmland, encourage local food production and consumption, and promote agritourism. What do you think about this initiative?
I like this initiative, and this is why, one of the things that attracted me to Brighton from Commerce City since that's where I grew up, was the fact that Brighton still had a small town feel, but it was a growing city. It's one of the reasons why I wanted to work for Brighton. At the time, I came to work for them, and it's one of the reasons why I wanted to live in Brighton. And so, for me, I think it's an important concept because if Brighton can keep that agritourism in that farmland the way that we keep seeming to develop it, I think it will help promote a good future for us. I also like the idea of the fact that we have people who produce food here that sell to our merchants here, so that we can buy in and eat our own product, basically. I just think it's a very, it's a very great program, and I like it. Thank you.
Mr. Cushing, do you think our main street and downtown are healthy and successful? If not, what would you do to change that?
So, one thing I think Brighton's done a pretty good job of is bringing in a lot of big chains and restaurants and stores into our community. But I don't think we've done a good enough job balancing that out with encouraging and incentivizing small businesses. And, you know, small local businesses, the owners of those businesses, they live here, they spend their money here, they raise their families here, it's really critical that we do more to encourage more of those businesses. I think we need to do more to revitalize downtown. I've heard ideas from constituents ranging from, you know, maybe putting a pedestrian mall down there, various other ideas, but I really do think we need to do more to incentivize businesses and get more local, and just make downtown a vibrant place in our community. Thank you.
Mr. Shinnick, what's more important for our city of Brighton, building new homes and commercial spaces or rehabbing, expanding, and better utilizing our existing home and storefronts?
Well, I think everything is relevant for the time that it exists, and in the later part of 2019, I think we have hundreds of new homes under construction and/or there's been so many building permits issued by the city that that's going to continue, as well as we have a number of commercial construction locations that are going to go online irregardless of what happens. So I think now is a time to rehab our existing housing and to expand and make some better utilization of our existing storefronts. I support Bura, and I would certainly encourage and see if our City Department of Community Development can assist our homeowners and our local businesses in obtaining finances and whatever else is necessary to see if we can revitalize those areas.
Mr. Albert, some people in our community say that we have traffic and parking problems. What do you think? How would you mitigate those concerns or change the situation?
Well, to be completely honest with you guys, I am not a city planner, I'm not a civil engineer either, so for something like this, I would really call upon the experts. I would find city planners, I would find people who actually specialize in identifying traffic flow and optimizing space for parking, as well as accessibility for everyone involved. And based on their recommendations, as well as working with the businesses that would be affected, the residents who would be affected, maybe their neighborhoods, just collaborate with everyone, as well as the other city council members, of course, and try to create a mutually beneficial solution.
Mrs. Palmer, what would you do to support a vibrant economy in our area?
Well, the first thing would be, to make a vibrant economy would be sustainability. Right now, the focus seems to be on restaurants, which are basically minimum wage type jobs. I've always kind of wondered, why not move Denver, some of Denver businesses up north here? I'm sure there's a lot of residents, not just here, but in the surrounding area, that would feel relieved from driving back and forth to the Denver area. So, I was always kind of envisioned, why don't we have a tall office building here? But first, let's put it out there to some of the businesses in Denver and see, just see how many might open up and be willing to relocate here.
Mr. Jordan, how do you plan to involve residents in the decision-making process in our area?
That has to be the toughest question to ask a city council member. If you look at this room and the size of Brighton, we can't even fill this room. So, I probably would have to get some advice from other council members on how do you get people motivated? If you make them mad, obviously, that gets them out. But I can't see myself going door-to-door all the time. I got a lot of good suggestions when I got signatures, and those would carry me for at least a year. But, you know, I'll get advice from seasoned members and see if people can get out of their homes or, you know, get their voice out. But I'm willing to hear the voice, obviously, and be an advocate for the people. Thanks.
All right, that's all for round two. We're going to go ahead and move on to round three. For this time, Edith Smith will answer the exact same question. Everyone has one minute to answer this question. We're going to go ahead and start with Mr. Shinnick, then move to Mr. Ross, once we get to Mr. Sanderball. We're going to move back to Mr. Albert, and we'll end with Mrs. Pollard. All right, your question is, what do you like most about Brighton? Starting with Mr. Ross.
I think one of the things I like most about Brighton is we really have a lot of diversity in this community, and after 40 years of working for the city, I've seen many examples of it. And I think that really makes a perfect composite for us to really pull together and devise a really good community. We have so many different kinds of people from so many different walks, and getting together has really been, really made for a really unique and prosperous and healthy community.
What I really like about Brighton is all of you, the people. The neighbor-help-in-neighbor-type mentality that most of the city has, even though we're going through some division at this time, there's still people willing to help each other and work together and find the common ground. And that's one of the reasons I chose Brighton to move to when I moved here, and it was just the people here, the friendliness, the opening doors for other people, holding them open for other people, the highs and lows, that's what I love about Brighton, and that's what I want to continue growing with it. Thank you.
What do I like most about Brighton? There's a few things. I like the 27J School District. They've done a lot to support my family and my children. I think they do a good job with the limited resources that they have, and they really care about the children, do everything they can for the community. Our first responders, I think we have an excellent police department, fire. I think everyone there really cares about the community and really does everything they can to be community-oriented. I love the local businesses in Brighton. There's a lot of great restaurants and great shops, and it's really, it's just nice to live in a city the size of Brighton that feels like a small town. Thank you.
Every survey, every questionnaire, and many, many personal testimonials I've heard say that everybody likes the small-town feel. That's why we moved here. I grew up in a little town on the East Coast, my wife grew up in Lamar. Now, if you want to keep this small-town feel, you're going to have to buy some property because if you don't, everything will be covered with houses, and that means a bond issue. If you want to still like the city, then you're going to have to preserve it, and you're going to have to spend the money to do that. Thank you.
What I like most about Brighton, I think comes back down to that small-town feel, and I touched on it in my last question, the agri, the agricultural economy, I don't remember the exact term. But I think, the one thing about Brighton is it's got the small-town feel. I feel like I know a lot of people in Brighton, and I feel like a lot of people know me. But at the same time, with that small-town feel, you got some big-city amenities, and I believe that's very important to have that. And I think that's what I really like about Brighton, because it's a very inclusive community, and I'm able to be a part of a diverse community. I sit on a school board for one of our local charter schools, and I've been involved in other areas of Brighton, and I just like the fact that through all that networking, I've developed some really good personal relationships and good friendships with people, and that's what I love.
So, I hate going door-to-door and knocking because I really don't like it when people just knock on my door at random. But I had to go and collect signatures for this nomination, and one of the things that I found was that people were actually really interested. And everyone I spoke with was truly intrigued as to what I would do differently for Brighton, what my thoughts were. And that's not something you find very often. I've lived in New York City, and I've also lived in Plano, Texas, if any of you know where that is, it's a little tiny town, and I've never seen that kind of engagement from people who don't know you and who are really interested and willing to get to know you. So I think that that makes it kind of interesting, and it's one of my favorite things about Brighton.
He's right, everybody's right, Brighton is still a small town, no doubt, and people are friendly. And I lived in Denver for a while, and my kids still live in my old house in Denver, so I go in there a lot, and I'm telling you, you don't want Denver traffic. You think of Brighton's traffic, forget about it. You could sit there for hours. Anyway, it's true, you know, knocking on doors too, you had a lot of interesting conversations. And so, you don't get that in Denver either, in the big cities. So Brighton is still a good, small-town feeling, and another thing I like about Brighton is I can drive around here and remember what it was like 70, well, 60 years ago, 50 years ago. But it's still my small town. As much as it's growing on the outskirts, I'm still in Ward Three, and Ward Three is still my small town.
What I like best about Brighton is not only the small-town feel, but some of the camaraderie from the residents in the outlying neighborhoods. We've got some very sharp, intelligent people here with great concerns about what direction their city is going to take. And they're ready to reel in on some things and say, whoa, wait a minute. They don't want to see their city grow too fast, but I feel that sometimes you can't always help that, but what you can do is try to make it developed reasonably slow and easy growth. And it's just easy to get around in.
What do I like about Brighton? Everything. We have some really great people, have some great farms. It's just, to me, it's just the right size. I know we have to grow, we're going to get in the 21st century, I know we have to, but we kind of stall a little bit, and there's a reason for that, because we like it the way it is. And like it or not, it's going to grow, but we, I'm in Ward One, so that's probably one of the older parts of Brighton, and we really are small, and we pretty much do know each other, so it's, I just love it here. Thank you.
All right, that concludes round three. Now we're going to move on to the candidates. Remember, keep your questions to 30 seconds. Sitting will hold up a red paper for you now, when your question is ready to be met. Some of these questions will be situated that one of the candidates, others will be taken on all of you, and I don't remember if that anyone can answer those candidates or may have accused. If anyone in the audience has questions to start, you can put your hand in the commission area.
Hi, my name is Sam McKinney, and my question is for Deborah Parmley. During your speech earlier, you were discussing accountability, transparency, sustainability. Now, myself and two other people here in the audience, we're both on the Board of Directors with you in Indigo Trails for the Homeowners Association. We witnessed firsthand quite the opposite of trustworthiness when it comes to those three facilities. What will you do to bring confidence where the confidence has been lost to the citizens here in Brighton who maybe don't know you the way that we do?
In order to have transparency, it means getting the information out to everyone. In our association, it is hidden. The financials are not available, and until recently, the minutes were not even available. That is very key in transparency, that's how you build trust, not only with homeowners, but the residents of the city as well. Accountability, my long, extensive background in accounting is basic bottom line, follow the GAAP. For those of you who are not familiar, that's Generally Accepted Accounting Principles. When those are in place, it prevents processes and things from happening, invoices, et cetera, that would not occur otherwise.
Thank you. Now we're going to read one of our audience questions. This is to every council, uh, every candidate. What do you think is the most important thing impacting the health of Brighton citizens? If you are elected, what would you do for the rest of it? Yes, the health of Brighton citizens. It's, yeah, I'm going to read it. What do you think is the most important thing impacting the health of Brighton citizens? If you were elected, what would you do for the rest of it? Anyone can start this.
Well, that's a good question, and those of us that keep up with social media and newspaper know that some of the people here are very concerned about our water. I'm not sure why we're still concerned about the water, it's been going on for, I don't know how many years, but it just doesn't seem to, we can't seem to get it right, and I don't know why. And that is about our health. So, I can tell you, still being a member of council, that we are working on fixing it. We've spent an enormous amount of money, that should be one of the last things that we're worrying about, but we're going to get to the bottom of it, we are going to fix it. Stay calm, stay patient, we're trying. Thank you.
I just want to echo Councilwoman Pollack, I think the city's on the right
And I applaud our efforts and I'm going to make sure that we get there. Thank you.
Guess I could be cliches and say that I echo both their sentiments. I think water issue is one of the issues of the health standpoint, but I think a lot of the health would be the, just getting the public's trust back and regaining that health. And that's with figuring out how the forensic audit's going to go along with the citizen-led committee that was just appointed, working with them, working with, again, other members of the council, bringing more trust back into the city government and just working together and being more transparent with the city and working on the water issues with the utility as well as the billing cycles and things of that nature to bring a closing end to that. Thank you.
Just a minute before we continue. Not every candidate has to answer the question, even though it's addressed to everyone who are just in the main, the other goes ahead. Feel free to just pass. If you have something to say though, take your, take your.
So, the number-one thing that's affecting health in Brighton, in my opinion, is some of the issues with traffic that have resulted from the growth in our city. We've had some pretty bad accidents in this city, deaths. We've had a school bus accident. We've got a proposal for an aggregate mining plant to go in along Highway Seven that's going to introduce a lot of truck traffic on that highway that's already got a lot of traffic. And I just think that we need to do a lot more to proactively address some of those issues. I know there's been some concern about 120th and 120th isn't, you know, technically a city of Brighton Street and there's some inter-agency issues there. And I think we need to work as city council to bring those agencies in and discuss, you know, how we can solve these problems because we can't just sit on this and wait until there's, you know, more accidents and more, more issues. Thank you.
Now, the intersection at 144th and Sable has killed and there have been many accidents there. It's not in the city. So annex it, fix it. Same, same for the gravel pit, which can be a particular problem in the atmosphere. The gravel pit that's going to be on Highway Seven, it's not in the city. We have no control over it. So annex the thing. This traffic is the thing that you want to fix the most. The water issue is completely bogus. The water that leaves the filtration plant is pristine. It is delivered to your water meter in pristine condition. Something happens for some people. Some people are having trouble. So, the mayor has proposed a sort of a help desk to go along with that and we need to start serving people after we deliver.
I'm going to kind of, I'm sorry, I'm going to kind of echo the traffic, the traffic safety problem that I've seen in Brighton. And I'm going to come at this a little bit from my law enforcement perspective. I believe one of the things that council needs to do and one thing I'd like to address is just figure out how we could, I know we're trying to get more manpower in the police department, but I'd like to see the police department have a traffic safety team be developed as a dedicated team for each shift. I think that would do a lot to help curb some of that. Excuse me, I think part of the problem we have is we have patrol officers trying to do proactive patrol, respond to calls for service and do traffic safety. And with the growth of our city, they're getting spread very thin and it gets very hard for them to be able to maintain all that with time management. So I think I'd like to see us kind of grow that traffic safety team so that we can help prevent some of those issues. Thank you.
So I think we've kind of beaten the water issue into the ground, but one of the things that I haven't heard anyone say yet is anything about fracking. So if any of you know much about hydraulic fracturing and how it works and some of the issues that are related to it, that is a, for me at least, that is a major health concern for the people as well as the surrounding environments. And so one of my biggest things, I believe, in terms of health and safety would be to take that approach to figure out what is the optimal solution because the, obviously natural gas and oil and all those things are necessary to both our economy as well as our infrastructure. However, I think that we should really focus on how to make it safe and ensure that it has the most minimal impact on the residents.
All right. If that's all for that question, we'll move on to another audience question. Once again, raise your hand if you have a question.
Good evening. Good evening. Thanks again for your service and potential service. As city council, you know, you only hire three people. One of those will be our next permanent city manager. I've heard a lot of you through social media and in person mention that you want to support staff. Some of you, reading your Facebook posts and next door, seem to want to clear house. So my question is, in your next contract for the city manager, will you support putting in, mandating a 360 review? Thank you.
Yes, is a simple answer on that. I definitely would support that 100%.
I think not only supporting a 360 review would be important, but I also think how we select our next city manager is important. One of the things that I've learned in doing my research is that we had an outside company come in and basically present to council everything the council basically needed to know about our city manager. But the one thing that I've seen is that we don't make our city managers, as they're applying for these positions, go through integrity interviews, which would require a polygraph or a computer stress, a computer voice stress analyzer or some sort of psychological evaluation. Yet these managers are in charge of the police department and the chief of police. And I think it's important, in order to vet any issues that we would have with these people, that they should be subject to the same type of hiring process that any police officer from the lowest level to the chief of police would be subject to in any agency in the state of Colorado. I think it'd mitigate a lot of the problems that we find in some of these people that we hire for city management. Thank you.
So, obviously hiring a city manager is going to be something really critical for the next city council. As someone who works in the private sector, while it's an entirely different set of qualifications, I generally am put in the position of hiring IT managers, IT directors, and I think some of that perspective can help in this process. I also think with the city manager, it's really going to be critical to have a peer review process where their department heads and their staff can review them so we can really get a full understanding of what's going right and what's not going right. You know, it's the, it's one of the, you know, few employees that report to city council and it's really important that we get this right and that we, you know, manage that properly.
All right, as everyone answered their question. All right, now I'm going to do another written question. This is once again for everyone. Do you support our historic downtown? And if so, why? The historic downtown.
I guess I'll kick that one off. Yes, I personally love going through little towns. I've had a position where I had to travel throughout many different states and there are plenty of big cities. I think it's fantastic that we have kind of a quaint little town feel. And so I definitely support it. I think it's something that we should work on keeping up and making it accessible.
I think I'll hit both those questions. First one on the city manager, I think the city manager coincides with budget and what the 360 you mentioned, I think goes for the budget too. People have to be communicating all year round on budgets with the city manager. We can't direct the staff. We have to go through the city manager to give staff direction, but we can interview the staff and get everything straight. And that should happen all year round. City manager should be, should be open, transparent, all year round, 360. As far as downtown, I would love, now this may get somebody going, but I would love to make Cabbage and the one below downtown one way that way and then bring Main one way this way and put diagonal parking, increase the parking on the street on both sides. And just spruce up downtown and make it a historic downtown like I remember.
Yes, I believe in preserving the historic downtown. I also view seeing more walkability. To me, that is removing the parking downtown and putting some park-like setting in the street, maybe in a parking garage further out. And where my vision is, I see maybe a trolley going up and down the street carrying people. People, there'd be less cars so people would enjoy walking around shop to shop more rather than looking both ways and hoping they don't get ran over. So, thank you.
Of course, I support our downtown.
It's really where Brighton began and I think it has a lot of potential. Again, like I said, I do support Borough and any improvements that we can do to enliven that area, I support 100%.
I support preserving the historic aspect of downtown. I believe it's good for us to know the history of where Brighton began. And I think as residents, if we know our history, then we kind of get to learn the culture of Brighton. And even though we all might have disagreements and sometimes feel divided, I know that I'm on opposite ends of issues with even members up here, but it's something we can all gather around and come together on and bridge that gap. We don't, we don't have to have disagreements that negate good relationships and good friendships. And I think that it's important. And I think having a historic downtown could help bring that history through so that we can have a common ground to be together on.
Two items. Parking garage is a fairly good idea, but you have to have a shuttle that runs up and down Main and probably up and down Bridge. You have to get people from the garage to the business and back to the garage. As to the rating of the city manager, currently the charter says that city council members may not go around pestering staff members. So, I'm with you. Some better mechanism needs to be in place to review the city manager and a little bit more often. What happened last time is he was given a pass and only later was it found out that there was a serious problem. So, okay, fix the mechanism. That's okay. That'll work.
I mean, with historic downtown, I think I mentioned that I'm a big supporter of that, but it's really going to be critical to bring in more businesses because if there aren't businesses down there, then there isn't really a downtown. The parking situation, it's kind of funny because I go out to some of the stores in Prairie Center, Target, Home Depot. I see people walking across these giant parking lots and the walk from the parking lots adjacent to downtown are the same or less than those parking lots. So trying to cram all the cars on Main Street is part of the issue and, you know, trying to separate that a little bit more, having more of a, you know, patios and places where people can gather downtown and have restaurants and eat and enjoy the downtown area, that's really critical.
Hello. I'm Liam from the Brighton Standard Blade. Thank you all for being here tonight. The recall election has become a symbol of more than just removing the mayor from office. This question's for all of you. Do you support the recall? Yes or no? And what's your response to some residents' concern over a quote-unquote "council takeover"?
Can you repeat the last portion of that question, please?
The first or second?
The second, please. Just like that.
Do you support the recall? Yes or no? And what's your response to some residents' concern over a quote-unquote "council takeover"?
Well, I do not support the recall for a couple of reasons. First of all, I don't know how we can have a council takeover in a democracy, but I suppose anything is a stretch of the imagination. But we have, in, at least in my 40 years, we've never had a recall of a mayor or a city council person. Instead, we have elections and we have them every four years. So I think it better serves the community if we have someone who has a much better platform and more problem-solving capabilities and a better campaign to run against our current mayor than it is to come out waving pitchforks and other banners that say we need to change course in the middle of the stream without any real plan in place at all. Thank you.
So, yes, I support the recall and I have my reason. I am part of council. When such a huge decision was to be made regarding firing the city manager, we asked, some of us asked more than once to the mayor, why? Give us a reason why we're just going to fire him. Be aware that it cost us a lot of money to hire that city manager and we paid off the last city manager, so we're spending, I can say, most of the time that I've been on council, firing and hiring city managers. That's not going to get a whole heck of a lot of stuff done.
So, it's interesting as city council candidates, we don't have much of a say. We have one vote, kind of the same as everybody does. My concern about this recall is that we had a five-to-four vote to fire the city manager and so we're going to have a city council that's going to have to appoint a new mayor. And I'm really concerned what that process is going to look like. We've already got a pretty divided city council and I think it's going to become more divided when they're faced with this task to do that. You know, we'll be there, I guess, to pick up the pieces from that next year. One of us, you know, will be, whoever's elected. Personally, I won't be voting in favor of the recall. I'm against it, but, you know, whatever happens, we'll do our best. I think really we need to put that stuff behind us and work to fix the things that people are upset about. I can understand that people are frustrated, but we really just need to get down to business, roll our sleeves up and fix the problems that people are frustrated about.
There's nothing to it. The water issue is a straw man that's been put together and beat to death and made as the issue to remove the mayor. It is simply a political hit job, a coup d'etat. The idea is to take over the city council and be in the control of Matt Johnson. That's it.
So, first of all, I think, excuse me, I think recalls, I think they're important. I think people have a right to do that, but I really think recall should be held for those special situations when someone's acting unethically, maybe as a, you know, in a criminal fashion. I think in this situation, the mayor has not committed crimes, he's not done anything unethical. And I think having a recall because everybody's angry with the decision he was part of making for terminating the city manager, I don't think is right. People get fired from their jobs and you don't see, you know, people with pitchforks trying to get rid of the CEO of companies. And I think, I think that it's very important to understand that in this situation, it is what it is. At the same time, I understand this recall's going on and I think that, I don't know that... And I think that, I don't know that it's a way for city council to take over, but I think if I'm elected, I have to be able to bridge that gap and work with whoever's there.
I'd like to respond to Mr. Sandoval. Yes, people get fired all the time. People do get fired all the time. That's just the way it goes. But that was what the reason was for the city manager to get fired because he fired.
I do 100% support the efforts of the recall committee and the people that signed the petition. And it's now in the hands of the voters on November 5th. I supported the recall, but for other reasons besides what a lot that's spread around on social media now. My reasons came back in April and May with some things I saw and some votes. But it's not just the mayor. There's a few members that I have apprehensions about. But it's like, like Adam said, you know, we're one vote. It's, we're not candidates on the stage. But I do know that there's a lot of, a lot of things behind it. There's going to be some choices that have to be made. If the recall goes through, there's going to have to be a mayor appointed. If it doesn't go through, the council and the new council will have to work with that mayor for the remaining two years until he's voted out. And whatever the result is, we need to support whoever's there. And that's what I believe in. But I do support the recall. And I do support the efforts of the people and their ability to vote this November.
Yes, I support the recall. Originally, testing. Yes, I am for the recall. Originally, I was on the fence because I always want to give people the benefit of the doubt. And as time rolled along, I started seeing more and more the issues without any answers, just silence. That was part of it. Yes, people, when new management comes in, they want to build a team that supports them and works with them. And I also see that happening with our council as well. We need to build a better team. Thank you.
I don't support the recall. And I looked into the numbers, and I got the sheet from the city, and it's 61 million is what is in this fund. It's an enterprise fund. You can only use it for certain things they're designated for. And they're all at a deficit now, so we have to collect twice as much as we have now. So, we're not even close to reaching the goals of these enterprise funds that we want to reach. So, most of the people will say, yeah, okay, the funds are still there, but then, well, somebody didn't tell the truth, or somebody, this and that. So, you really can't impeach or remove on opinion and on disappointment. It has to be kind of by the numbers. And I, from what I've seen from the numbers, it's all there. So, carry on.
So, I also support the recall, not for the reasons that a lot of people said. And for me, predominantly, it is simply from seeing what's going on. So, what drove my support ultimately was seeing how many people have issues, seemingly major issues that impact their lives, that are, that have gone unanswered for years. And to me, at some point, as someone who has worked in upper management, as someone who's worked with volunteers, and at various upper levels of an organization, when you have enough people who are not getting the answers they need, someone has to be held accountable for that. And at this point, as a city, our option is to hold the city council and the mayor accountable. So, for those reasons predominantly, I do support the recall.
All right. I am now going to read another question. This one is specifically from Mr. Jordanelli. How would a Ward Three constituent communicate with you? Again, how would a Ward Three constituent communicate with you?
Well, my phone number's on all my business cards. It's in the website. So, calling. Is that what you mean? Or do you mean, how should they communicate with me? Well, all my information is out there, so I don't think it's any secret where to find me.
All right. I'm going to take another audience question.
Good evening. I'm Wilma Rose, and I'm a former council member. So, I know what it's like to sit in front of all this group and try to answer questions that in a year or so, if you are elected, may certainly change your opinion of what happens in the city and how you govern that city. But my interest is in arts and culture. And because we have such a diverse city, that is one of the areas that I hope will continue to grow. When I first started, we had many programs that we instituted and are still presently going on. So, my question to you is, what are your thoughts on arts and culture? And how important is it in the city? And how would you like to see that it grows?
I think that's very tough to answer in one minute. Yes, arts and culture is an important element, I think, of any city. So, my degree is actually in psychology, and I do happen to understand how it affects different parts of the brain. And yeah, so I would say it is a pivotal thing. As far as how do we improve it, how do we grow it? That's not a question I can answer sitting here today. If I were to be elected, I'm sure that we could form a committee or some kind of a panel with individuals who would be able to present options to the city council and allow us to come up with ideas, whether it would be some kind of a botanical garden-type setup and more arts, some kind of historic venues. It just depends.
I think arts and culture are very, I think they're an important foundation. They're fundamental, especially to our city. I mean, we're sitting in a room that is a big production of our arts and culture here in Brighton. And this building would not have been possible if it wasn't for that planning. And I think it's important that we continue to foster that and grow that. I love that we have different venues, different galleries, different things going on. I'm friends, and one of my mentors is one of our local artists. And I think it's very important. I have a son who's trying to get into performing arts, and he's a budding actor. And I just think that having that is very important for our community so that we can continue to foster that growth.
So, yeah, I mean, being in the Armory, the arts really neat. I really enjoy seeing the art in the city hall building. I enjoy the plays and music that Brighton's brought to the Armory. I think one untapped resource we have is some of the students in the high schools. I'd really like to see some of that art be put on display and more of that and just encourage, yeah, I'm thinking we definitely want to encourage more of the artists to get involved in displaying their art.
This is indeed a lovely room. The thing that will increase arts and culture the most is a greater population. As we approach, say, 100,000, which is the projected target, that will provide enough population to support these sorts of things. It will happen.
I strongly support the arts, especially when it comes to diversity. Coming from, living in Hawaii for 20 years, I kind of miss it. They envelop all the different cultures. I kind of miss the dragon dances. I think it's very important for everybody to learn different cultures, to better understand each other. Thank you.
Hi, Wilma. Of course, I support the arts and culture. I'd like to see more of it. It's, we have some great artwork, and there's so much more. I'd like to see more of it displayed. And maybe we can work on that. I'm sure you'll figure it out. Thank you.
All right. Now, I'm going to read another one. What are you going to do to improve? A, traffic. B, public safety that is taxed. C, control growth. Where are we going to get water if we don't slow down? I'll read that again. What are you going to do to improve traffic, public safety that is taxed, and control growth? Where are we going to get water if we don't slow down?
Well, I'll start. You know, growth is tough. It's definitely critical that we spend a lot of our efforts directing it and managing it to meet our goals and needs and taking into account water, taking into account, you know, when we work with developers, that water rights are part of those developments, and that's a consideration. I know city council has been pretty aware of that issue and makes sure that water rights are purchased when a lot of these developments go in. But yeah, we just have to make sure when we bring these developments to the table that all of those issues are considered.
Growth can be controlled by controlling the city's borders and within those borders, reserving property as open space. That way, it can't be captured by developers. It's really the only way to do it. As far as water goes, the tradition in Colorado, especially Denver's history, is the Warren Zevon approach, which is lawyers, guns, and money. You either have to buy it or you have to find it. To find it within the city's boundaries, probably need to annex as much as possible of the Platte River Basin and drill more wells. There is no other source. You can try and buy it, but it's awfully expensive. As far as traffic goes, well, that's for the professionals to determine.
I think I'll start with traffic and public safety. I touched on that a few minutes ago. But again, I think we need to encourage our police department and try to help them keep adding more officers to the department. I also think we need to have our traffic engineers. Pick up, or at least maybe they need more people in their department to help them with their workload is what I'm trying to say. And I think that it's important we focus on these areas. I think water's another important issue. We're going to have to buy more water as we grow. We're going to have to try and find it, just like everyone else has touched upon. And that is going to cost us money. So, we got to be prepared for that. And we as citizens need to understand that, you know, these things are coming. The growth is coming. With the growth, there's going to be more money coming in as well. So, we need to plan smartly for all of those. Utilize the funds that are coming in and make sure that we appropriately hire and get that.
So, my mom has some friends that actually just sold some water to the city, water rights. What do they call it? There's a name for it, huh? Shares, bought some shares. So, we just have to continue to push to buy more shares because our population up, our water, once they cross, we have to continue to buy more shares to keep that water supply and our growth in population. So, it's possible. We'll just keep pushing to buy.
First, I think the focus should be on not only good water, but quality water for everybody first and foremost. Then after that, look at the plans for the development. Slow it down a wee bit and keep your infrastructure at the same time. Make sure it's in place before, maybe even before the building commences. Your water usage is, what I could see, is done a little bit better is in conservation. Right now, just based on the tiers that we have, there's no water conservation. And it only applies to a few people. But I think looking at the whole picture and addressing each one so they're all in balance will help us tremendously.
All right. I'm afraid that's all the time we had for questions. I'm so sorry for getting any askers. The candidates will be here until eight, if you want to talk to them individually. Now, we're going to move into closing remarks. Make sure council, or sorry, not council members yet, make sure candidates, to include what ward you're in. Remember, you only have one minute for these closing remarks. We're going to do the opposite way we did introductions. So, we're going to start at Mr. Sandoval and come down to Mr. Boyd.
He keeps calling me Mr. Sandoval, and I keep looking for my dad. Anyway, I'm a candidate for Ward Four. And again, I just want to give back to the community. I want to utilize the experience that I've had throughout my career to be able to give back to the city and the understanding that I have with being able to look at policy law, understand situations, look at evidence and facts, and be able to decipher all that to help make smart, good, sound decisions for our city and for the residents of our city and the people that I serve. Thank you.
I'm Archie Decker. That's for Ward Four. My experience in government with the planning commissions, as a military leader and as a member of my HOA, I know how to lead, I know how to follow, and I will do what you ask.
I'm Adam Cushing for Ward Four. And I've talked about my background. I, you know, I work in Denver. I have a family of four. I live in this community and work in this community, and I think I can bring a good perspective to help solve problems. My commitment is to bring better transparency. People want to know what's going on in terms of projects, what's being done, what isn't being done, why it isn't being done. I commit to encourage better communication from the city. The city project dashboard is a good start, but we really need to do a better job getting that message out to everybody so they know timelines, budget, status, cause for delays, completion rates. And my commitment is that I will work to bring that. I will go to, you know, get involved in things and learn about issues like, we're talking about RTD, we're talking about, you know, the aggregate pit. They don't directly affect our city, but the more we learn as city council members, thank you.
Hi, again, my name is Tim Watts, Ward One. Basically, like everyone else is saying, open up the lines of communication within our citizens and the local government as well as having more transparency. I think the city's on the right track now with putting more publications out there on using different sites to notify our residents. And I just want to help along with that and help move our city with a nice growth in a reasonable way with common sense.
I'm Christopher Shenick, Ward Four. I've been in this city a long time. I'm well-educated. I've been involved with accounting, budgeting, and problem-solving my entire career. If you know me, you know that I'm very transparent and honest. If you need me, I will act on your behalf. My compass on our city is guided by the needs of all of our citizens right now and into the future. So, thank you very much. I'm on Facebook. Feel free to send me a message.
Mary Ellen Pollock, Ward Two. As I said earlier, I'm going for my second term. I absolutely believe in transparency. And I think the city's doing a fairly good job. They're on Facebook. You can call, you can reach us, you can email us, you can call us. I get people stopping my office that aren't even in my ward with questions or concerns. And I will talk to the city manager and do talk to him about those concerns. So, we can be reached. Do we have a long way to go? Yeah. Yeah, I think we do. Can we reach it? Yes, I think so. Are we all going to agree all the time? I don't think so. But we'll give it the best we can. Thank you.
We have some great challenges and some great opportunities as well. I'm very happy to see that city manager took off on the transparency with the dashboards. Now, we just need the scorecards. I'm very pleased that they took my suggestion. It was written up in the Brighton Blade. It was written up in the Brighton Blade and is going forward. It's a very good start. It's certainly not the end. And with the accountability, as long as we have the processes in place to follow, and people are not jumping over somebody else to get, meet their ends for their means, things will go smoothly, and there won't be the outrage that what we have going on today. And with your help and support, we can make these next four years the best in Brighton's history. Thank you.
So, I plan on coming in and listening and listening and observing until I get it right, and a lot of the veterans are going to give me a lot of advice, and that's great. I also think that budget, budget, budget is so important, and I'm going to keep stressing that, that all year long, you got to keep working on that budget. You got to talk to staff, listen to staff, find out what their priorities are, try to get everything so that everyone is a little bit unhappy. That's great negotiations. If everybody's just a little bit unhappy, then you did a good job. So, I want to listen to people, listen to the staff, and do the reasonable thing.
My name is Vadim Applebaum. I'm a candidate for Ward Four as well. I keep forgetting to mention this anytime I'm in front of people, but I think it's important to state, especially because of the gentleman I have sitting down here. I am a veteran, so one of my focal points will be to create more initiatives to get more veterans involved in our community. Perhaps it will be to help create incentives for businesses to hire vets or to move more veteran-owned businesses into Brighton. Another huge focus for me is education. My daughter has been in the SD 27J School District since 2015, and I think it is pivotal that we invest the time and the energy to create a better education system for all the kids. And then accountability and communication. Those are the two pivotal points. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you for coming.
All right, that's all we have scheduled for tonight. The rest of the time until eight will be, all the candidates will be there to talk to until eight. Thank you guys so much for coming. I hope you learned a little bit more about your candidates and your ward. I know we didn't get to all your questions, and I'm sorry about that, but I hope you guys have a good night. Thanks again for coming.